Okay, 6:30. Welcome. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. On behalf of the Fountain Valley School District Superintendent Parent Council, I would like to welcome the Board of Education candidates and our audience to the 2020 School Board Candidates Forum. The FVSD Superintendent Parent Council is comprised of the PTA and PTO presidents and an executive board representing all 10 elementary and middle schools in the Fountain Valley School District. My name is Petra Erlinson. I'm the president of the Superintendent Parent Council, and I will moderate tonight's forum along with assistants from Jen Maciel, the parliamentarian of SPC, and Rena Lucchese, executive assistant to the superintendent. On November 3rd, Fountain Valley School District voters have the opportunity to choose two board members who will each serve a four-year term. There are four candidates for these two positions. SPC conducts this forum as a public service to the parents and citizens of our district to help them make an informed decision. SPC maintains a neutral position on all candidates. Before we begin, on behalf of SPC and the citizens of Fountain Valley and Huntington Beach who live within our district, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to each candidate and to their families for being willing to take on this very important job. We are all proud of the reputation that Fountain Valley School District enjoys as one of the top-ranking school districts in Orange County, and we thank you for wanting to continue the work of this wonderful and distinguished district. Now, a little bit about tonight's forum. Earlier tonight, the candidates drew numbers to determine their speaking order. A different candidate will be first to answer each question. They will each give a two-minute introduction. The candidates will then have two minutes each to answer five questions. The candidates were given the questions about an hour ago so that they could consider their answers. And finally, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement. With that, we'll start our introductions. We will start with two minutes for each introduction. Would each candidate please introduce yourself by giving your name and any information you would like to share about your candidacy? We will start with Mrs. Galindo.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Galindo, and I'm here tonight to share my background and my thoughts about serving on the Fountain Valley School District Board. I am running for this so that I can continue the important work that I have been involved in in the last eight years. My job is to work with board members and our superintendent to give direction to carry out our mission. Our mission is to promote academic excellence, a mastery of basic skills, responsible citizenship, and a desire by students to achieve to their highest potential through a partnership with community and home. We do so through a culture of kindness and cooperation, and this is the kindest place I have ever worked in. We study and evaluate issues, listening carefully to each other. We listen to parents, teachers, staff, students, and our community when gathering information. My background includes two years of teaching middle school. This helps me understand the role of a teacher. I worked for 17 years in the private sector and earned a master's degree in public administration. This helps me understand the business and government side of the business. I have raised five children who went to Plavon and Masuda Middle School, and this helps me understand the job of a parent. I have 10 school-aged grandchildren. This helps me understand what parents are dealing with now because I see what my grandchildren are dealing with. My lifelong love of education helps me do this job with joy. You have trusted me to serve you before. Please vote for me so that I can continue to serve with dedication and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Galindo. Please now mute yourself. Mr. Schultz, you have the floor for your introduction.
Thank you. Can you see me on the screen? Okay. My name is Steve Schultz, and I'm a teacher at Fountain Valley High School. I have the unique perspective of having been a student of the Fountain Valley School District. And being an active teacher, I think, is so critical where making current education policy. I'm the only candidate tonight that's been endorsed by the teachers of the Fountain Valley School District. I'm also endorsed by the teachers of the Huntington Beach Union High School District where I teach. And I've been pleased in my first nine years as a teacher. The students have voted me Teacher of the Year two times. I have a master's degree in leadership administration. I've come into your homes for over a decade, every month, in Fountain Valley Magazine, my different maker column where I wrote about education issues, leadership issues, and just how to be a better neighbor. And I can't wait to give back to the school district who gave me so much as a student and now as a teacher. You know, this whole campaign, I've had two things on my desk the whole time. This jam that Mrs. Susie Crandall, my fourth-grade teacher, gave me about two years ago. This big, huge basket came into my classroom. It was full of bread and gifts and this jam, and these jelly preserves and a great handwritten letter. I'm so blessed to this day, 25 years after I left the classrooms, Mrs. Benson, Mrs. Susie Crandall still contact me today. We're still, we have a relationship. And so I want to make sure the current teachers are being served that same kind of love and guidance that my former teachers gave me and still give to me. Also, my niece is a fourth grader in the district. And so I pledge all of you that I'm going to treat every one of your kids as if they're my own niece, my own family, and make sure that we have a school district that's being brought into the future. And we must get rid of, you know, some of the outdated things that are going on and bring us into the 21st century. Make sure that every kid has a love of learning and that every kid also learns or loved by their teachers. Make sure our teachers are feeling the love too. My name is Steve Schultz. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Please put yourself on mute. Mr. Nguyen, you now have the floor for your introduction.
Am I on mute? Hi. My name is Tom Nguyen. I'm a resident of Fountain Valley for about 13, 14 years now. And we came over here to California in '86. I'm originally from Michigan. And my father, he is a, when he lost his job in Flint, Michigan, when we lost that job at a GM plant, that's why we came over here to California. And I found Fountain Valley is to be, oh my God, it's a wonderful place to live. And I have a son here in Masuda. He started from Cox Elementary School, and I raise all my three kids here. And I remember when I was young, in fifth grade, fifth grade, and there's a big banner on the lunchroom. It is 10 words or two-lettered 10 words. And I remember to the day. If it is to be, it is up to me. And I feel, oh my God, that is inspiring. I can remember till today. And education at the youngest age is so important, at the elementary school, at the middle school. That's why it's like, it's important for me to give back to our community and for our kids. Our kids now is our future. If we don't give back to them, they're not going to give back to us. And that's what I want to do, is give back to our community. I educated both a grande, got my degree in Fullerton, Cal State Fullerton, right here. Business degree with real estate. I am a real estate broker in Fountain Valley for the last 14, 15 years. Carrington Real Estate is my brokerage. I also have a company here in Fountain Valley Integrity Escrow. I've been owning for the past 19 years.
Mr. Nguyen? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you-
I apologize. I had my time and I went over.
That's quite all right. I appreciate it. Please mute yourself. Mr. Collins, you now have the floor for your introduction. Mr. Collins, just a reminder, would you please unmute yourself
First of all, I'd like to thank Petra and SPC for sponsoring this forum. I think it's so important that our community gets to hear in person the candidates for this special office. I bring 33 years of experience to this position as a teacher, as a principal, and 12 years on the school board, three times president. I'm also on the Assistance League Board, who has given us $50,000 for our teachers and a proud member of the Fountain Valley Rotary Club. And Rotary, our Rotary Club has a focus on education, so it fits right in with my beliefs and commitment. I continue to have a passion for public education, good teaching, and most importantly, student achievement, both on an individual level and a district level. Our outstanding leadership team is a result of, I'm happy to say that I was on the Selecting Committee for Dr. Johnson, and it's probably the most important task a board member ever gets to do, select a new superintendent. Dr. Eckert was a wonderful superintendent, and we really love Dr. Johnson. We have worked on being a community partner in communications and achievement, and we've responded. Oh, that's my two minutes.
You have a few seconds left, Mr. Collins. I started you when you came off of mute, so.
Just a thought, our previous success is really a predictor of our future successes. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to all of the candidates for your introductions tonight. We're going to go ahead and proceed to the questions that we have prepared. Rena, if you would show those on the screen. Great, thank you so much, Rena. Question number one. Again, we have two minutes to answer question number one. Question number one. This new school year has started off in a non-traditional way due to the ongoing coronavirus pandemic. What issues specific to the coronavirus pandemic do you think are the most important at this time? And we start question one with Mr. Schultz. Please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. First, I want to say to all the teachers out there, thank you for all you're doing. You're our frontline workers. You matter. You're making the biggest difference, and we appreciate you so much. You know, yesterday was World Teacher Day. And sadly, the way our district celebrated that was sending out an email to the teachers to change two policies that I think should be changed immediately. And it's after they turn in written lesson plans every Friday. Turning in lesson plans, that's why it's so important to have an actual teacher, a current teacher, making education policy does not help kids in any way. We should be asking ourselves, how is this helping kids? If it's not, we shouldn't be doing it. Teachers are already overworked and overloaded. We should be adding more to their plate that serves no one in any kind of way. It sends a message to teachers that, I don't trust you. And that's not a good message we would be sending to our teachers. The other policy that came out yesterday, World Teacher Day, is that all teachers are mandated to stay in their classrooms for two extra hours when kids aren't even in there. The CDC released again yesterday that COVID-19 is not only airborne, but it can linger in the air and go well past the six feet we've been talking about. So we're putting teachers' health and life in jeopardy by forcing them to stay into these classrooms for two hours to do planning work and to do an online work when kids are at home virtually. So if the kids are home virtually at that time after lunch, our teachers should be allowed to be at home working virtually where it's the safest for them. So that's the two things I would change off the bat right away. It just happened yesterday. Is, you know, the theme this year is that FVSD, we're family. Well, we need to make sure we take that family from a catchphrase or actual culture. And how you make teachers really feel like we're part of families, to show them that they're treated as professionally, you trust them, and that you don't need to have lesson plans being submitted, and you care about them enough as family to let them be as safe as possible, get them out of the classrooms as much as we can. So those are the two main things that just happened yesterday. As a board member, I would ask to be changed immediately to protect our teachers and let them know that we trust you, you matter to us, and that you're loved. We want to make teachers, make students feel loved. We want to make our teachers feel loved too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Next, for question one, we have Mr. Nguyen. Please unmute yourself, Mr. Nguyen. You have the floor.
Hi, thank you. What issues do I think is important at this time? I feel that the most important for me right now at this time as a father of my son, he's in eighth grade in Masuda. And also, my concern is about the youngins, the elementaries, the first grade and second grades. I was reading the pamphlet here. The first grade, second grade, the elementaries, they're not wearing masks or that, they're not, you know, they're so young. Do we have enough teachers there to make sure they're not together? Do we have enough funding? That's some of my concern right now. I mean, that's all my concerns for this particular question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Next, we have Mr. Collins to answer this question. Mr. Collins, please unmute yourself.
The question regarding the most important things at this time. I happen to be a member of the Orange County School Boards Association, and I meet with representatives from all of the school districts. And I have garnered a lot of information regarding the pandemic. And I'm so happy to, you know, the safety of students, teachers, and staff are paramount in this district. We have spent a lot of extra time hiring people for the cleaning of classrooms, making sure there's social distances, masks, lunches and passing, and even dividers on each desk. It is important during this time to keep parents informed of what's going on. We need to be very, very transparent. We've also hired a special principal for parents that chose to have distance learning. In addition, we've extended the time for childcare. And I think all of those things combined show a lot of planning, a lot of strategy, and nothing ever goes right when you do it the first time, at least not in my house. And we're learning, but I truly believe in talking to colleagues in other districts, this district has done a wonderful job at the reopening of schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mrs. Galindo, please unmute yourself for question one. You have the floor.
Thank you. The issues that we face at this time, most importantly in my mind is that we assure that our classrooms are cleaned and checked carefully every time students change in that classroom. We have hired extra janitors and people to do this cleaning, and we also have extra people on the staff to check handwashing, make sure that the children have hand sanitizers, and make sure that our staff and our teachers are safe also. It is important that we communicate frequently with parents about any problems that arise. We need to be honest with them and let them know when things go right and when they go wrong. I do believe that one of the things that we need to do is help parents with technology. Our virtual students are at home, and I think we'll be calling them the Zoomers. That'll be the name of their generation. They'll be the Zoomers. And their parents are helping them and assisting them, especially the younger ones, with the technology. Now, our support staff for technology consists of three people, and they have turned over three times as many help tickets in this beginning of the school year as they have done during a regular school year. And I commend that staff for keeping technology up and running. We must make sure that our students receive their food carefully, and we must make sure that their technology is working properly.
Thank you, Mrs. Galindo. Thank you, candidates, for answering question one. We'll move on to question two. Question two. The current pandemic conditions have exacerbated stress and reduced support systems for many students. How do you think the school district can help to provide social, emotional, and mental health support for students and families? For question two, we'll start with Mr. Nguyen. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. I read this question over and over and over. And I read the reopening plan over and over. And to me, I think Mark Johnson and the Fountain Valley School Districts have done a tremendous job of all this. You're doing it right now, providing social, emotional help for everybody right now. What my concern is, how are the teachers holding up? It seems like the teacher is doing kind of double work. The teacher is probably really exhausted because my son is doing really well in school right now. He's doing his Zoom thing in the morning, and he has his Tuesday and he has his Thursday to go to school. He seems to be doing really well. I don't think you should do anything different. Just kudos. You're doing a great job. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Next up, Mr. Collins. Question two.
Thank you. We have anticipated this even before the summer. During the fall, the board had discussed this issue. It is a very real and an important issue. We have hired more psychologists, counseling, and providing resources for both parents and teachers. I have two sons who are both teachers, and so I know it from a teacher point of view. Yes, it's stressful for them. Yes, it's stressful for everybody at this time. And as much as we can, we try to oblige teachers who wanted to teach from a distance or the hybrid model. So there's only so many things we can do, and I think we have those systems in effect immediately, and people need to avail themselves if they have that concern. Teachers have always been the ones that have recommended, if there's a child abuse case or whatever, they are mandated reporters. And we certainly make sure that's all followed up on. So I appreciate the question because I felt very strongly about that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, for question two, we have Mrs. Galindo. Mrs. Galindo, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you for this question. This is truly an important issue, and we have hired extra people to help our students and our staff and our teachers with the social and emotional issues that have arisen as a result of this. The world is behaving in a different way under the stress of this virus. And so students sense that. But those who have, those students who have come back to school have come back in a joyful way because they are meeting with their friends, and that in itself helps them socially and emotionally. As far as our teachers, we're listening to them carefully. At the very beginning of the year, our middle school teachers asked that we give them an extra week to start middle school. We listened to them, and we gave them that extra time because we knew that they were the ones that could best make that decision. So I believe that with the extra psychologists and extra counselors that we have on staff and with our teachers as social and emotional support, I would like to mention something that happened this morning. I was making my tea. I live right next to Plavon School, so I can hear the announcements. And Principal Hamm was speaking to the students and talking to them about the school day. And what he did was he first recognized the students of the month and called out a student from each classroom at the school. Then he wished a happy birthday to everybody who had had a birthday in August, and he wished a happy birthday to everybody who had had a birthday in the month of early part of September. That recognition alone.
Mrs. Galindo, I am so sorry to cut your story short. If you want to finish for a second, and then we'll move to the next speaker.
I was really at the end of my story. I was just, I just stood and smiled because I thought this truly is emotional support that the students enjoyed tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, you have the floor. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure if these new counselors were hired this week. I believe we actually have less counselors in our district than, we lost a counselor last year that I don't believe has ever replaced or rehired. I believe we only have one school psychologist for all of our middle schools. And so we can do, we definitely need to have more than that. We also can get better masks for our teachers. I know N95 masks are hard to get, but we can get K95 masks, which are pretty close, but relatively cheap than the cloth masks we're giving teachers right now because cloth masks don't actually protect the wearer. They protect someone else. So if we want to protect our teachers, let's use Heroes Act money and get them better masks. Also, let's create a database like Irvine Unified High School, Unified Youth District has done. They have a website where it counts every school and lets people know how many active COVID patients there are, teachers, students, by the numbers. And so parents can go there and be well-informed. Just yesterday, we have one of our students in our district test positive for COVID. And so we want to make sure that information is out to parents, and they're getting that accurate information. We also need to do better for our kids. We talked about emotional support. We have our kids in our middle schools right now who are carrying around these shields and waiting for 20 minutes in between each period, standing around, 60 from each other, can't really, you know, socially engage each other. But the shields aren't being washed either. They wash the desks, but the shields are more dirty than the desks. And what, instead of having these shields just stuck in the corner of a teacher's room, I mean, these teachers are not only being forced to stay extra, but be stuck in rooms with a bunch of extra shields that that group won't pick up until two days from now when their cohort comes back. They're not being cleaned. Why not instead make them kids stand outside for 20 minutes? Teach the kids how to clean their own shield. Teach them some personal responsibility, but the parents will like that too. And they come home and ask them to clean the room. They have experienced cleaning things. And that way, kids aren't standing around for 20 minutes being emotionally scarred two times a day, waiting for their desks to be cleaned. Let the kids clean their desk. Almost every country in the world teaches cleaning at the school, elementary and middle schools, except us. I think we can lead on that and bring our school into the future that way and help kids learn personal responsibility and not be so terrified with the policies we have in place right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question three. Fountain Valley School District is consistently ranked as one of the highest-performing school districts in Orange County. What are the two to three strengths of which our district can be proud? Why do you see these as strengths? Let's start with Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Thank you. I think it starts with the board setting their goals and making them clear and concise. We have had similar goals the last few years because each goal still had work to do. And- We have had similar goals the last few years because each goal still had work to do, and we are close to accomplish some, so next year we'll probably have to revise. They are passed down then through the superintendent. So it's not confusing to teachers, it's not confusing to the public, and the board works very closely with the superintendent. We have also engaged in having the latest and the best instructional practices through our staff development. We've had some of the best experts in the country come in, and in, as a result of that and great teaching, we do have great teachers. Our scores have gone up. We're probably second in the county in math and probably third in language arts. We have great leadership, both at the district level and at the school site level. It's a caring and compassionate manner, but it also stresses accountability. And I think in any organization, we have to have that. And the lastly, I think the last thing that's made us great is we've been very fiscally prudent and responsible. The county asks us to project our budget for the next three years, and we usually can do pretty well for two years, but I defy anybody to look three years ahead and see how our budget is going to be. So those are the things that I think, the instructional practices, the consistency with the board goals, the staff development, and the fiscally responsible, prudent district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next for question three, Mrs. Galindo, please unmute. You have the floor.
It's always nice to follow Mr. Collins. We are of the same mind in terms of why our school district succeeds to such a high level. First of all, we attract the most competent teachers, and our teachers are our great strength. With the professional development that we have offered them, they have become the best teachers that the county can offer. And the students are the recipient of this training. Our students, in spite of the fact that we have the lowest funding or one of the lowest funding in the county, are number two in math in the county and tied for number three in English Language Arts. And for that reason, I would like to thank our teachers for the work, the hard work that they do every day, and I'd like to thank our parents for working with our students. You see, we're a team. The board members work with the staff, the staff works with the principals, the principals work with the teachers, the teachers work with the students, and the students work with the teachers and their parents. And that team together, knowing where we're going, puts us in the top spot that we are in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Galindo. Mrs. Galindo and Mr. Collins, if you please mute yourself now. Continuing with question three, our next speaker, Mr. Schultz, you have the floor.
Thank you. First and foremost, what makes our great is our kids. Our kids are fantastic. Where does that come from? Being raised by fantastic parents. Our community is involved, our Fountain Valley Schools Foundation, so many other local nonprofits and people. Like I said, I have my fourth grade and fifth grade teacher who after retirement are still serving me now in my 30s. And so we have these fantastic teachers as well that have helped our district. And we have Dr. Johnson as well, who is obvious to me cares about all of our staff and students. And so, but we want to make sure, I ask you, all you voters, don't listen to teachers. There's a reason why I'm the only candidate endorsed by the teachers. See how they feel about the professional development. See how they feel how well they're being listened to. And we need to do better. And that's not an attack, that's just an awakening that we, as anyone in a position of power needs to understand, there are ways we can do things better, and we need to treat our teachers better. We ranked number two, number three in math and English, but ask how we in teacher pay and benefits? I don't think we're in top 10. And so we do have a problem with the way we're funded is different than most districts, but we can give them a planning period. You want your kids to have even greater education? Why don't our teachers have planning periods, which almost every district allows to teachers? A time where they are just focusing on making sure your students aren't having the best, most engaging lessons possible, lessons come to life. Why aren't we reimbursing our teachers for the classroom supplies they pay out of their own pocket? Teachers should not have to pay. I mean, myself personally, I pay thousands of dollars every year on my classes for my students. I know so many teachers in Fountain Valley do the exact same thing. We can only write off $230. I want to create the Benson Bucks reimbursement program where we have a fund where we are reimbursing our teachers for the money they spend on our classrooms that make our schools so great. And it's important to let every teacher know that I see you, you matter, you're important, and you're the ones that make this district so great. And making sure when you make teachers feel loved, they're going to make sure that all of our students and our parents will feel loved too. And communication matters as well. We need to make sure that we're sending out the right information to parents, not at a board meeting getting a new schedule while the principal of Talbert is giving parents the old schedule because it was never communicated to her that we've gone to a new schedule for middle school. So communication to our principals, communication to our students, and to our parents and teachers matter. And that's why our school district is so great. Let's take better care of the teachers who've helped make this district so great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Nguyen, question three, please.
What are the strengths which makes our district can be proud? I totally believe Jean and Ian are absolutely correct. One of the holy strengths of our district is our leadership. Mark Johnson has done a fantastic job keeping our budget low, right, with exactly what Jeanie said, right? Our per pupil per revenue is the lowest in the county, but yet we're able to provide all of these, all these support, such as, did we know that there's additional preschool daycare in Fountain Valley? I did not know that until we had a meeting with Mark Johnson. We had extra daycare and also meals for seniors. I am super proud of that. I didn't even know. I mean, we don't have enough funding, and yet we're doing all these additional ancillary assistance for our community. And I am super proud of that. And that, that's just great. That's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. We're going to move on to question four. Regarding long-term priorities in the district, what are two to three long-term needs that must be addressed, and why do you feel those are priorities? We'll start this question with Mrs. Galindo. Please unmute.
Assuming that we move into a healthier mode in the spring, and we will come out of this pandemic, we have some great needs that we need to address as we move into full-time school. Our students are falling behind as a result of not being in school full-time. We have done a fabulous job in the past with intervention, and so we need to assess our students and make sure that they are current at grade level. And we have a program that we call Intervention that we use in order to help bring students up to grade level. Secondly, budget is going to be a big issue because we do have in our state some issues that will cause economic problems. We have received extra money this year from the federal government and from the state for cleaning supplies in order to bring our classrooms up to speed so that we can have our kids back in school. But that's not going to be there next year, and we have the additional expenses. 90% of our budget is spent on the people that work here. And we're, and that is, that is a necessary, we need to be able to provide them with a good salary, insurance, and also step up to the pension benefits. And our piece of the pension benefits tends to increase each year. Now, we got a break this year, but that's not going to happen again. And so we're going to have to pay very careful attention to our budget. So that's my second thing.
Mrs. Galindo, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Okay.
But you used your elapsed time. Thank you. For question number four, we're going to move to Mr. Schultz.
Thank you so much. You know, I have multiple town halls with teachers and talk to them one-on-one, and then they say how nice it is and refreshing to have someone solicit feedback from them and listen to them. And this is what the teachers are telling me that really should be the priorities of our district in the next few years. Number one is, there's no writing curriculum right now in our district. There's no unified writing curriculum at all, and they don't touch or get any real guidance. As a, now she published author myself and an avid writer and a current active English teacher, I can provide a great service through our district by helping our middle school teachers get the writing curriculum. We don't even have an English textbook in our school district for middle schools. So there's so many things we can be doing when it comes to writing standards and teaching writing and helping every kid see themselves as writers, as artists. You have to stop treating kids as test takers and stop seeing that writing or reading aren't some task you do in school. No, writing or reading are lifelong things that you do for the rest of your life to increase your intellect, your curiosity, and your empathy and your leadership. We should be seeing every kid making feel like a reader and a leader when they leave our middle schools and they go into high school. So we need to increase our writing curriculum, I should create one. We need to get back our reading specialists. The district has cut some reading specialists. By fourth grade, it's paramount that our kids are at grade level for reading. After that, it gets really hard to catch up. So we need to increase our reading specialists. And right now, we have one reading class for sixth, eighth grade combined. A teacher can't adequately meet the needs of a sixth grader and eighth grader in the same class. We need to create reading classes, make sure by fourth grade, all of our kids are vibrant active readers and writers. We also need to add public speaking as well to our middle schools and more electives. So when they come into high school, they're confident, they articulate their thoughts, they're avid daily readers, they have a love of learning, not just taking tests and quizzes, but actually a love of learning for the rest of their life, lifelong readers for the rest of their lives, and they learn their love. Students will love learning when they learn the love by their teachers. And we need to make sure we're providing the teachers all the curriculum and supplemental textbooks they need to make sure our students are being raised as writers and readers and leaders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Next for question four, we have Mr. Nguyen. Please unmute yourself, Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you. I see what Mr. Schultz is saying about we need more curriculums and programs for our kids, and that's absolutely correct. But in order to do all these programs and curriculums, we need the budget. We need the funding to provide programs such as what Mr. Schultz had mentioned for math and English and so forth. I think as a board member, you want to see the big picture. In order to do the little detail, you need to see the big picture to attain the detail. I think we're doing really good with our budget, but we need to see somehow to generate more funding. I see that that is our long-term goal, generate more funding from the state. What can we glean from the state to get additional funding? The other thing is, exactly the same thing, is how do we get our per pupil revenue up? Right now, like Jeanie mentioned, we are the lowest in our community. We are the lowest in Orange County. How can we get up a little bit more? And the hardest part is to maintain our budget and keep our discipline and maintain our budget because, you know what? Mark has done a fantastic job to keep our budget low. Now it's, well, let's see what we can do to increase our funding. And that's what I see as our long-term goal for Fountain Valley District.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Mrs. Galindo, I noticed that your mic is not muted. If you would go ahead and mute your mic. We have, last for question four is Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, will you please unmute yourself?
Thank you. You're correct about being the lowest funded in Orange County, and that's a result of the LCAP formula. We don't have certain groups of kids, and yet with the very little, we still ascended to near the top. That's a credit to everybody in the district, to the administration, and especially to our teachers. Just to let you know, we also follow how well our kids do in entering the high school, and we've got very good feedback from our high school administrators. We had those district priorities that I talked about earlier, and given that we increased student achievement, that's a given. Align the resources for the achievement, that's a given. Modernization, we're doing that. We've done six out of eight, and Plaven has already got the air conditioning. So we're well underway and doing what we told our public we would do. I truly believe we need to continue to have an inclusive, caring, and collaborative culture in our district. And inclusive means for all students, whether they're special ed or regular ed, inclusive means having parent input through SPC, through foundation, through individuals. That is so, so critical. Lastly, I think the communication with staff and families, we've worked on that one very hard. We have established a safety committee for the district. We've been working on this two years, but we include the police department, the fire department, teachers, administrators, classified staff, and we're going to come up with the best product that there is.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. You've run out of time for question number four. Thank you so much. We have one question left tonight, and that's question number five. What do you believe are the most important characteristics of an effective school board and an effective school board member? How do you feel you demonstrate those qualities? And for question five, we will start with Mr. Schultz. Mr. Schultz, you have the floor.
First and foremost, what every leader must do is listen to those they serve. And the question that every leader must ask every day is, do you love me? That's what everyone you serve wants to know. Do I matter to you? Do you see me? Am I important to you? It's what every kid wants to know their teacher. Do you love me? Do you see me? Do I matter? It's what every teacher wants to know their admin. It's what everyone wants to know their boss. Am I more important to you than just my performance at this job, my performance in school? And so it's important we learn to lead with love. You know, I had a kid one day in one of my classes at Fountain Valley High School. I gave him a journal entry to write about the best gift you've ever gotten. And this kid raised his hand quietly, never talked all year. He says, Mr. Schultz, what do you do if you've never been given a gift before? And the whole class goes silent. And I said, what do you mean? And he goes, what about your birthday or for a holiday? He goes, no, I've never even given a birthday card before. And I said, write what it feels like to be a 16-year-old kid for your whole life and no one ever saw you. No one ever made you feel special, important to give you a gift. And then he starts writing. I go to my cabinet, I have all these little gifts in my cabinets I try to give out, and I put together this little Woody action figure from Toy Story, a little Milky Way candy bar. I wrote him a handwritten letter. And at the end, I brought the kid up on stage, and I said, never again will you ever be able to say no one's ever given you a gift before. And he opens up the thing, and my letter basically said, I know you want to be a leader one day, and you run track. Well, Woody runs Annie's house and toys, and you're going to be a leader someday too. And all the Milky Way galaxy, there's no one like you. And I love you, and you matter, and you're important, and never again for the rest of your life will you be able to say no one's ever given you a gift before. And thank you for the gift you give me every day that is you. And imagine if we're in a work environment where every student and every teacher is feeling seen like that, that it's being communicated literally and through our actions that you matter, you're important, and I'm going to listen to you. We're not always going to agree, but I'm going to listen and let you know you're loved and you matter beyond your job performance. And we can create a whole generation of that, of teachers who feel loved and students who feel loved, and making sure our students are making the other students feel loved, our entire country gets elevated. And that's my goal as a leader, is to lead with love and make sure every kid has a love of learning and learns how to lead with love themselves too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Question five, next we have Mr. Nguyen. Mr. Nguyen, you have the floor. Mrs. Galindo, actually, I noticed that you're not on mute right now. If you would If you would mute yourself. Mr. Nguyen, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe the most important characteristic of an effective school board, again, it would be a leadership quality, and of that, having leadership quality is not just telling people what to do, what to do, and you have to have effective communication, of yet you need to have effective listening. Being an effective leader, you need to lead by example, so at the same time, you listen and you become a servant leader. You give back to whom you lead. That's how you demonstrate these qualities as a leader. You don't just let them tell them what to do, you want to be able to communicate that through your actions. So that's what I feel.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. For question five, now we go to Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Most important things as a board member. One of the first things I did when I became a board member was sign up for the Masters in Governance Program. I was a school principal and a teacher and a system principal, but when you make that jump to a school board, your learning curve goes way up, and you need to learn a lot of things that you never knew. One of the things that I think that I've learned even more is the teamwork that our current board and the boards that I've served on the past 12 years is probably the most important. There is no I in team. It is definitely teamwork. You have to abide by consensus. You don't always be successful in some of your thoughts, but when consensus is reached, then you support that publicly and follow up. You need to do your homework on issues and be sure that you're prepared for each board meeting. Our superintendent meets with all of us prior to each board meeting and more extensively to the president of the board. We spend a lot of time in preparation. We go to each school twice a year, plus concerts, plus board meetings. So you've got to avail yourself to spending a lot of time outside in the community and at the schools. Once in a while, it's great to go see some of the kids in a soccer game or baseball. They love seeing you there. They cannot believe that you go to a grocery store and buy Cheerios, just like they do. It's important that you become a very effective community member as well. So I think those qualities, and the last one of always.
Mr. Collins, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's quite all right.
You've used your allotted time.
I talk too much.
Mrs. Galindo, you're last for question five. Please unmute yourself. Mr. Collins, if you would mute yourself, and Mrs. Galindo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think that one of the most important characteristics of a board member is to know what your job is, and the job of a board member is different from what most people think. Their job is to set the goals, to set the goals of the district, and then to put in place direction for the staff to follow those, and we have done that. Secondly, as was mentioned earlier, we work as a team. We research, we study all issues, and we collaborate with our other board members. We have sometimes some very difficult discussions about issues. For example, when should school open and how should school open was a three-hour meeting, and that is an example of the hard decisions that board members must make, but then we leave it to staff and to our superintendent and to our teachers to follow up on those. So our job is to set the goals, to listen carefully to parents and teachers and the community, and invite all of them in to give input so that we can make good decisions. I think a good board member needs to be knowledgeable, they need to be determined and hardworking, and understand that this is not a job, this is the Part 10 job. We've had three extra board meetings, what we call special board meetings, just this last month. I'm board president this month or this year, and I must do the agenda for each one of these along with the superintendent, so I have the time. And so a board member must have the time to do all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Galindo. We have covered our five questions for the evening, and we will now go into closing remarks. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks, so candidates, please reset your timers to one minute. And we are going to go ahead and begin with Mr. Nguyen for closing remarks.
Not much of closing remarks, but I just want to thank SPC Petra. Thank you very much. Also, Mark Johnson for doing a fantastic job with our school district, and I think we have wonderful candidates this year. You guys are going to do a fantastic job, hopefully. Again, my name is Tom Nguyen. I'm running for school board, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Next up for closing remarks, we have Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, please unmute yourself. You have the.
Hey, thank you. As I started out, I have experience at elementary, middle school, and I even got to work twice at Fountain Valley High School. So I see the whole spectrum from little ones to the high school. Community involvement, I'm very active and very involved in our community, and I think it's important that board members are seen there. We need to listen to what our community is saying. On a personal level, I have three children, all three are teachers, one in Italy and two locally here in another school district. My grandchildren are all products of Fountain Valley School District, and my wife was a director of the Girls and Boys Club. I'm a caring and dedicated to all education and all students. A well-educated population is the key to our nation's success. Thank you for this opportunity. Stay well and be kind to others.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you for your closing remarks. Mrs. Galindo, you have the floor. Mr. Collins, if you would mute yourself, and Mrs. Galindo, if you would unmute. Mrs. Galindo, you're still on mute, so go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go.
Thank you. In closing, I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments of the last four years. First, we passed Measure O, and thank you to our community for the ability to be able to modernize our schools, bringing air conditioning, clean air into our classrooms for our students, especially now. Secondly, our strong academic programs, our excellent teachers and our staff, as we mentioned before, propelled our students to the highest ranking in the county. Third, we have placed middle school art-science labs on each of our campuses during modernization. This has truly turned our schools into true middle schools. Finally, we established a safety committee, and that has taken on a whole new meaning now, but with the safety committee, everyone who checks into the campus, we know exactly who is on campus at all times. I have worked as a teacher for 12.
Mrs. Galindo, I'm so sorry. You've used your allotted time. Thank you for your closing statements. We will finish with closing statements from Mr. Schultz.
For many years, I would take my basketball teams every summer to meet John Wooden, the English teacher, the writer, and the great UCLA basketball coach. One thing he always told my teams every year is that when we're young, we think that all change is progress, which is not true. When we get older, we forget there is no progress without change, and a vote for Steve Schultz for school board is the change we need. We're going to change our homework policy and get rid of all this meaningless busy work and worksheets that make kids hate education and hate learning, implement things that are meaningful and practical. We're going to follow the data that's there. We're going to make sure that every teacher feels valued and seen and loved and heard, and so they make sure that every student feels valued, seen, loved, and heard. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the teachers of this district. I'm the only candidate who is a student of this district. I'm the only candidate who's a current teacher at Fountain Valley High School. We need current active educators, making active education policy that's going to take our district into the future, and I ask for your vote, that you vote Steve Schultz for school board. I say to my kids every day, be kind yourselves, be kind to each other. I love you all big, giant much. Together, we'll make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. This concludes the 2020 School Board Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Fountain Valley School District Superintendent's Parents Council, I wish to thank these candidates again for their willingness to serve on the Board of Trustees and for their participation in this forum. A sincere thanks also goes to all of our community members who have joined us in the audience tonight. Good night.